Hello and welcome to the Candidates Debate for the Guilford Board of Education. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the East Shore, I welcome you to this Candidates Forum for the 2021 election. My name is Carol Reimers. I am a member of the Board of the League of Women Voters of the East Shore, and I'm a resident of Killingworth, and I will be the moderator.
I don't have an answer for that.
The League of Women Voters is a national, state, and local organization that is nonpartisan, and we welcome all to join us. We are pleased to sponsor Candidates Forums like this one because we believe in empowering voters and defending democracy. The candidates for the Guilford Board of Education joining us for this forum are: Jennifer Baldwin, independent; Timothy Chamberlain, Republican; Nick Cusano, Republican; Kristi Faulkner, independent; Bill Mazzano, Republican; Ally Passarelli, Republican; Noel Petra, independent; Moira Rader, Democrat; Danielle Scarpolino, Republican; and Arnold Skreta, Democrat. The format for the forum will be as follows. Each candidate will have a one-minute opening statement to describe their qualifications, followed by a series of questions. Each candidate will have up to one minute to respond to each question. Each candidate will have one minute for a closing statement. And now we'll get started with the opening statements, and we will be going alphabetically. Ms. Baldwin, would you please start?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jennifer Baldwin. I have been an attorney for 24 years and an attorney with the Public Defender's Office for 20 years, and that is now spent in London. I work with the most marginalized and vulnerable people. It has made me particularly sensitive to seeing different sides of an argument or an issue. I spend my entire day negotiating and helping explain the other side's view to other people. I have held a number of PTO board positions within the town of Guilford, and I believe that my experiences with those PTOs, especially the special ed PTO, which I have been involved with since its inception, will help me work with the stakeholders in the Guilford Public School System to continue the excellence that has already been started in our system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain?
Evening. My name is Mr. Chamberlain. I'm here because of a letter that was sent out by the Board of Ed in April explaining that they didn't think it was racist to use skin color as a criteria for hiring or in choosing which books to read. Same letter explained that there was an equity audit of the curriculum, that the curriculum would remain unchanged. I believe the Board of Ed, through that racial equity audit, is changing the curriculum into one that is agenda-driven, demonizes capitalism, and accuses our Guilford students of being complicit in a system of oppression. The superintendent weighed in on a matter in June, saying if you're not part of his side of the argument, not part of the solution to what he sees as systemic oppression, you're part of the problem. My friend says calling, with the support of the Board, any opposition part of the problem. The Board is labeling thousands of us, including teachers, parents, and students, as opposition. Where representatives are willing to attack such a broad statement of our community at a board meeting, ironically in the name of inclusion, change is necessary.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cusano? Mr. Cusano, we can't hear you. You're muted.
I apologize. I was trying to be considerate to others.
Thank you.
Can I time reset, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Nick Cusano. I'm a parent of two students at Guilford High School. I'm a concerned citizen, and I'm one of the Republican candidates on Roll B for the election on November 2nd for the Board of Education. I'm running for the Board of Education to ensure the current and future students receive a high-quality education that allows each child to excel to the best of their abilities. Our schools should be the place where our children are taught how to think, not what to think. However, the current administration is invalidating that philosophy with the ever-increasing inclusion of political and social opinion into the classroom. Our children receive an education based on the tenets of merit, fairness, with equal opportunity for excellence for every student, while classrooms should be free of political and racial influence and division. This is the foundation that made Guilford School Systems great and the reason many families like mine have chosen to live here. Continuing and extending this program of racial and cultural division is the plan for the liberal progressive message being delivered by Rosie.
Ms. Faulkner?
Hey, everyone. My name's Kristi Faulkner. I currently have three children enrolled within the Guilford Public School System. I hold two degrees. The first is a bachelor's in science from the University of Connecticut, and the second is a master's degree in education, also from the University of Connecticut. My love of science led me to pursue a career as a biologist, but I have a deep understanding and respect for the training and expertise that goes into being an educator in this state. I'm also the daughter of two teachers with nearly 40 years of experience each. I've served on numerous PTO boards, and I'm currently the co-chair of the Guilford Special Ed PTO. I've served on various committees and within the classroom. I believe very deeply in giving back to our community, which is why I'm currently serving as an alternate on the Town Zoning Board of Appeals. I feel that my educational background, combined with my vast expertise in serving our town and community, make me a highly qualified candidate for the Board of Education.
Thank you. Mr. Mazzano? Mr. Mazzano?
Yes.
Not hearing you.
You can hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, my name is Bill Mazzano, and I must say I'm super excited to be here tonight. I am so looking forward to being elected to the Board of Education. I think the Guilford Schools are tremendous. They can be so much better. I think that opposing viewpoints are really terrific and can bring a lot of growth to the school, which is why I'm so excited. It would be my pleasure to sit down with the Democrats. Not the Rosie, they're Democrats, I mind. So it would be all Democrat, but I do think we kind of need a difference, and we need that balance of Republicans on there as well, just so we can have a real, meaningful exchange of ideas and keep positivity going into Guilford Schools. We are not looking to change the curriculum. We're looking to preserve the curriculum. And my educational experience as a certified teacher in teaching the DARE program for 18 years, I think makes me highly qualified. I love Will.
Thank you. Ms. Passarelli? Oh, you're muted as well.
Okay, how about now?
That's good. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally Passarelli. I'm running for the Board of Education here in Guilford. I've lived in Guilford for 30 years, spent 20-plus years as an educator with two parents who were lifelong educators. I have my teaching degree along with my administrative certification. My doctorate is in early childhood education. I'm running because I think Guilford Schools has done a wonderful job in the past, and I want to ensure that the level of academic rigor is strengthened in a time where across districts and states, the bar is being lowered to allow for equity. Currently, Guilford is ranked 18th in the state, fourth in New Haven County, and I'd like to continue setting the bar high for our standards and not water down academics, as other cities and towns have done in the name of equity. I'm also concerned that the state of education is putting our children's social, emotional well-being in jeopardy, and I'd like to see a more celebratory and comprehensive approach to learning compared to the negative and divisive curriculum that is endorsed by Candy D'Angelo and critical race theorists, aka culturally responsive pedagogy. I'm looking forward to working with all stakeholders to continue to provide the high level of academics Guilford Public Schools is known to have.
Thank you. Mr. Petra?
Good evening, and thank you to the League of Women Voters. We appreciate you doing this. If it isn't broken, don't fix it. Our schools aren't broken, and in fact, our schools are outstanding and ranked in the top 5% in the nation. My name's Noel Petra. I grew up all the way in Stony Creek. I attended Notre Dame High School in Yukon. When the time came, my wife and I chose to raise our family in Guilford because of its excellent school system. I have two children that have gone through the school system, one who's a senior. Professionally, I'm a real estate and construction executive with 27 years of experience building complex projects worth hundreds of millions of dollars, and I've spent most of my adult life volunteering on nonprofit boards. I'm running for the Board of Ed to protect our schools, to protect our property values and our community from the extreme right-wing group of malcontents who've openly attacked our teachers, administrators, and our students, and have brought divisive politics, open racism, fear, and animosity to our community. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Rader?
Thank you. I want to first thank the League of Women Voters for inviting us here tonight and giving us this forum. My name is Moira Rader, and I am the only incumbent sitting here tonight. I have sat on the Board of Education for the last four years. I'm currently the Secretary of the Board, as well as the Chairperson of the Policy Committee and a member of the Operations Committee and a participant in the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. During that time, we have dealt with a lot of issues at the district level. There was the global pandemic, where we kept the safety and wellness of our students paramount and the staff at the core of every decision we made. We have successfully crafted annual budgets that are thoughtful, fiscally responsible, and seek continually elevate the district. We have strengthened the district's focus on the social and emotional well-billing of our students while supporting rigorous curriculum that speaks the potential of every student. These efforts have included a community-driven initiative to replace our high school mascot, participation in the Connecticut Teacher Residency Program, and the creation of--
Thank you very much.
Please, on, thank you.
Mr. Skreta? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Scarpolino?
Hi, my name is Danielle Scarpolino. My education includes a bachelor of fine arts from the University of Connecticut and a decade-long career as a visual and performing arts professional in New York City. I have traveled to different parts of the world, including the Middle East. These years brought about exciting personal growth. They also brought about challenges that I could never have imagined. I experienced the loss of many colleagues during the 9/11 attacks. I also experienced third-world conditions in Egypt during a time when human rights were barely existent. As profound as this was, nothing shaped my life more than the hearing the diagnosis of autism for my very first child. It was then when I learned what sacrifice was, what dedication, commitment, and perseverance meant. My natural instincts as a parent played a very little role in my child's life. I had to learn a completely different style of parenting. I had to become an expert on my child's condition. While these experiences have strengthened me and given me the confidence to take on daunting tasks, it more importantly has humbled me. As big as our world is, it really only comes down to one thing, and for me, it's our children, the most vulnerable among us. As a member of the Board of Education, I promise to apply the same sacrifice, dedication, commitment, and perseverance as I did--
Mr. Skreta?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Arnold Skreta. I originally grew up in Branford. I got my bachelor's from the University of Massachusetts Sammerson and my law degree from the University of San Francisco, which is a Jesuit school out there. I've lived all over the country from between undergrad and up through 2014 or 13, when I moved back to Connecticut. I've got twin five-year-old daughters that are in kindergarten at Calvin Lee Elementary School, and I currently serve on the Board of Assessment Appeals, and I'm an attorney in private practice, practicing financial regulation. I'm running to support and promote Guilford Public Schools, particularly its students, but also to support and trust the teachers and the administration in their development of curriculum. We're not going to change the curriculum. Rather, we're simply enhancing it with the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Program. It's a supplemental program. It's a value-added program. And such programs are all--
Thank you very much. Now, we will move to the portion of our program where we have the questions. And the first question is: Given declining enrollment, how do you plan to maintain a high-quality education in Guilford without further program cuts? And Ms. Baldwin, your first answer this question.
Thank you very much. That is right, the crux of everything that is going to proceed in the next season of the Board of Education because the budget season is coming up. There's going to be some difficult decisions made, but that is going to be done in conjunction with the entire community. Parents will be heard, teachers will be heard, students will be heard, administrators will be heard. You do the best you can with the budget that you have. Best way to describe it is like a home budget. You've got to pay your mortgage, and you've got to pay certain things. At the same time, you've got to do the improvements that need to be done, such as HVAC in certain buildings. There are certain upgrades that need to happen. But to do that with the least amount of harm to the actual students and the diverse curriculum that they are currently offered, I think that could be done with some compromise on all sides. And I think that that is something that Guilford has done very well to date and will continue to do.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain? Same question?
As the school system shrinks, the school budget should also shrink. There's no question about that. And we can receive input from many sources, but ultimately, the Board of Ed is responsible for making the tough decisions that are necessary. I believe money should be spent as best we can on students in classrooms. The administration will need to be downsized. Projects like the HVAC system may need to be put aside in order to better the classroom environment. Those decisions need to be made on a regular basis, and I believe we can do that without causing harm to the students.
Thank you. Mr. Cusano?
I'm muted this time. Thank you. Budgeting is a painful process. It's always about give and take. I'm sure all of us on this Zoom do it every week, every month, every year. I agree with a lot of what's already been said. Concessions have to be made somewhere. The school budget is such a substantial part of the town budget, and the burden on taxpayers is quite substantial in the town of Guilford. I think when we look at projects, it's not necessarily about eliminating projects, maybe right-sizing projects, reevaluating priority of things. You definitely have to put the education and student experience on a very high level of importance with that. Infrastructure upgrades, are there better ways to go about doing it? Is it cash? Is it bonded? Is it spread out over multiple budget cycles instead of one budget cycle? I think there could be some creative solutions to what will be a tightening fiscal environment coming forward.
Thank you. Ms. Faulkner?
Hey. You know, I think a big part of the success facing this difficult situation that we have looming will be in collaborating across party lines with people among our Board of Finance, our Board of Selectmen. I think it's clear that we have a very tight-knit community that is very proud of our excellent school system, but the schools do account for about 2/3 of the total budget of our town. And for that reason, I think that, you know, it's going to be a cross-team effort to really work together and figure out where we can reevaluate, where we can get smart and creative, but where we can come together to find a common solution that will benefit everyone in our community, not the sacrifice of our students and our excellent curriculum.
Thank you. Mr. Mazzano?
Yes. I believe that there are things that are untouchable. One of those would be the special education budget. That's kind of near and dear to my heart. I would like to really take a look at that and perhaps even expand it a bit. There are different areas that we can cut, absolutely. I've had a look at the budget, and it's a little tedious, but if you dig into the details, you'll find some things that are quite interesting and that could absolutely be cut and have no effect whatsoever on the student population or the quality of the education. It's really amazing. It does take a lot of work, I'll say. I don't mind doing that work. Obviously, I've done it up my own time, and I've found it quite enlightening. And so I'm very positive that if we really examine this budget, that we can make cuts in the right places and also increase in the right places. So it looks like a very exciting time to me. And I think--
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Passarelli?
I'm sorry, I keep forgetting. So I think budgets are a very tedious thing, and it's hard to kind of make everybody happy all at the same time. But I think we need to look for cuts that don't directly affect the students. I agree that we should be working collaboratively with all different pieces. We do, our educational budget is 60% of the town budget. We need to look at pieces like $25,000 for an equity officer that's supposed to be rolled into $140,000. That's a huge cut that could pay for resources, that could help with special ed, that could put our language teachers that were just cut back in the class and where they belong, that could go to our student athletes. We need to start supporting these kids directly. Forget about all the other, perhaps $6,000 on books. Not appropriate. It should go directly to the kids. We need to work together. Democrats, Republicans, Board of Finance, whomever else. Parents definitely need to have a say. They should have a say at our table. We work for them, and they need to come, and they need to give their ideas, and we need to hear them so that--
Thank you very much. Mr. Petra?
I think, demographically speaking, the entire country is challenged by the millennial generation aging out of high school. And so school systems all across the country are dealing with what they're going to do with declining enrollment. Guilford's no different. I'd like to think that our school systems will insulate us from any harmful effects of the declining enrollment. And as far as having less children to educate, you know, obviously, the budget will be less challenged. I don't think that any of the people, any of the candidates here have the expertise to go through the minutia of the budget and decide what's good for the children or what's not. I think it's up to us to work with the administration, with the teachers, and with the students to figure out how we go about every year updating our budget to make it appropriate and to keep our schools as strong as they are now.
Thank you. Ms. Rader?
Thank you. Regarding enrollment, I guess I wanted to just make something a little more specific. In 2015, the district had a demographic study done. We do them about every decade. And it was predicted that we would be down by almost 700 students, comparable to the number we are at right now. What that means to say is we are well above the demographic expectations for our school system and this area. Guilford is unique to that. Many towns are suffering and having to close schools, tighten their budgets, but we've been fortunate that there's been such a demand for students to come to our district because of our excellent reputation. Regarding our spend, on average, we spend $3,000 less per student than other districts that are in our dirt or in our comparable standing in the state. I don't see any need for contraction of programs, except that we need to be creative. But as much as Mr. Petra said, there's no need to cut programs when we have an outstanding district and we always manage to be on budget and sometimes under budget.
Thank you. Ms. Scarpolino? I'm sorry.
No problem. I can't wait to have an honest discussion about the budget. Through a Freedom of Information Act, we discovered that the district had spent over $6,000 on a racist book entitled "How to Be an Anti-Racist", and it was distributed to all teachers, K through 12. We have spent $25,000 on an equity officer who was forced to leave the Easton Reading District because he angered parents who blamed him for alienating them with strong liberal ideologies. Our opponents on Row C would roll that out to $140,000 salary. That's something unnecessary, and I believe it was a rush to fill this position due to the tragic death of George Floyd. I think everyone's emotions were high, and this whole change to our curriculum is brought about by this tragic event. I also know we spent on a diversity residency program another $25,000 and all the teacher training.
Thank you very much. Mr. Skreta?
So it's interesting because the declining enrollment is largely a kind of macroeconomic issue. But ironically, it's being juxtaposed by COVID, which sort of created this suburban renaissance, if you will, where the population, in general, along the shoreline, is kind of blossoming. So anecdotally, we might not see that much of a decline over the next few years. But that's besides the point. The other fact is that several of my opponents now have stated that they want to get rid of books. Basically, if you're going to institute budget cuts, you're going to not spend money on books. I want to make it clear that my campaign platform is to buy more books. I would work collaboratively with anybody on the board, with the administration, to trim where we need to trim it. But the decline in enrollment will create those--
Thank you. We'll now move to the next question. How would you prioritize specific capital projects over the next five years? And Mr. Chamberlain, you're first.
I would prioritize capital projects that are important to the students. I would accept the advice of the administration, the requests of parents. I believe, right now, there's a large project with the two fields that was needing being done. I believe it was done improperly when it originally went in. But largely, I would ask for their input. Jennifer did mention that there was an HVAC system that was necessary. Whether or not it's in the budget is a different question. If you're not able to afford it, you can't do it. I'd like an HVAC system in my house, but I can't afford it, so I haven't done it yet. Our dream list and our need list need to be separate, and we need to prioritize what's necessary, not what's wanted.
Thank you. Mr. Cusano?
Thank you. Capital projects for the school system, I think the biggest possible looming capital project out there that we're probably going to see in the next five years is going to be something related to the middle school. A lot of what I've read in the past, the middle school buildings are aging, particularly Adams, I believe, is the one that's called out most often. That's going to be the biggest challenge over the next five years. And how do we fund it? And where does that come from? I know when we addressed the issue of the new high school, a study was put together, and we examined that in detail. I would imagine the same kind of process would be undertaken for such a large capital project. And I think over the past several years, I know a lot of work has gone into the existing infrastructure within the schools, having two boys in the school system. And I think the balance has been struck pretty well, and, you know, no one can complain about the facilities in the infrastructure we are providing to our students. I think it's second to none.
Thank you. Ms. Faulkner?
I think the one that comes to mind most obviously is, like Mr. Cusano said, the middle schools. Adams Middle School in particular comes up anytime a parent has a child attend. That's all I hear about. So again, being new to the Board, I would have to defer to the experts who have been dealing with this probably for years and laying out the planning process for this. But I do anticipate that Adams would need some form of complete and total overhauling. That said, I think we could make smart choices. I live on the road that the high school's on, and it's a beautiful building, and I respect everything that went into it. But I do think we could evaluate the planning and get input from the community and try to come to an agreement on how to give our kids what they need, but, you know, make sure that we respect the town budget and the budget of our constituents.
Thank you. Mr. Mazzano?
Yes, ma'am. I really can't wait to have an honest discussion about the budget. I'm in agreement with everybody. Having gone to Adams Middle School, I know exactly what everybody's talking about there. I think, speaking with Mr. Regan, the custodial staff, the teachers, that's really the priority, I would say, and is going to be over the next five years. So the concentration really has to be there. We can use funds from other sources. As Danielle put so eloquently, there is money being spent, and it's a lot of money that could be directed there. We have portable buildings that are long overdue to be refurbished and be being-- We have portable buildings that are long overdue to be refurbished and be being permanent and make whatever necessary changes we need at Adams for the safety and the comfort and the welfare of the children.
Thank you. Ms. Passarelli.
Hi. Okay, so I, I too agree that Adams is a big issue. When I was a student there, even back then, it was, you know, a hot mess of leaking and stuff. So I, but I also agree with Chrissy that we should be talking to everybody and figuring out how this is going to work, where we can budget from, where we can borrow from the budget. I know that there's a $90,000 in a focus on responding to school loss training that could be looked at. Also luckily, I do have the expertise of going through the minutia of the budget because right now I do have that responsibility for my current job, being that I am dealing with a multimillion dollar educational budget, a project that I'm working on in order to support my district that I work in. So luckily we have a little bit of background here. I also think that just regular tech upgrade is going to be needed with the change of what's needed in the world and how we can make sure that our kids are graduating with that technological piece.
Thank you. Mr. Petra.
Thank you. Well, capital expenses are nothing to guess at. They're not a mystery. You shouldn't be surprised by capital expenses. You know, my career in real estate construction and property management, you know, we've developed, tried to intrude systems to develop facility management plans based on your business model. Usually project them out five to seven years and you update them every year. Each year you work with the administration, again, the teachers and the students and you decide what the priorities are. And then you project out the costs over time. You provide the, that to the town. The town understands and can anticipate the costs that are coming at them. And, you know, the two, the two things I think we should probably focus on are obviously Adams. And then I agree that technology is a big part of what we should be spending money on. The more technology we have available to us, the less square footage we need per student from a built environment perspective. I look forward hopefully to working with.
Thank you. Ms. Raider.
Thank you. Speaking to my background a little, I am also an architect for over 25 years, graduating from Columbia's Graduate School of Architecture and serving on the Operations Committee, much to what Mr. Petra alluded to, this is more of a master plan issue. It'd be very imperative that we do every year, we work with our facilities manager in developing a capital expenditure plan for that year as we look towards the budget and decide what kind of capital bonds or, you know, bonding are we to put forward for the larger projects? That can involve Adams, that could involve an HVAC system upgraded building. But the most imperative thing to do is have a larger plan. And every year we do this and we reevaluate this at a district level. And in terms of prioritizing, it would manage, it would need to have community input, but it would really need also expert advice. Although we as a board sit there and offer our, our input, we are not the experts. So we would defer to the experts and ask them to guide that master plan and what facilities projects would be a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scarpalino.
Well, the first thing I would do is get the input of our community. I wouldn't brag about my credentials and assume that I would be making the decisions. I would, being new to the board, I would defer to experts. And as far as minutia goes, I would absolutely be able to comb through everything necessary to get all the details and educate myself on any decision that I would make. I would never assume and I would never fall back on any of my arrogance on a subject. Again, I would include first and foremost, the families of Guilford, Connecticut. I would ask what their children need because the board serves children first. And I would make sure it was done top notch. And I would make sure that I oversaw, along with the other members of the board, that it was done with full cooperation of regulations, policies and laws. And I wouldn't need to.
Sorry, we lost you? Did you want to finish your last sentence? Oh, sorry.
I was muted. Someone muted me. I was just going to say I would need a law degree to figure out the law. I would go through the minutia of the law, figure out the laws, figure out the policies and get the job done right. That's what I would do.
Thank you. Mr. Skreta.
So if I remember right, the question is actually how we, we would prioritize specific capital projects. Is that right?
Yes, over the next five years.
I agree with Ms. Scarpalino that we are here to serve the kids first. So collaboratively with the community and experts and working on the board diligently. I think my first priority would be ensuring that capital projects are focused on the health and safety of the students. We're in the midst of a pandemic that doesn't seem to be going anywhere. So things like HVAC actually have to be of focus, particularly since this is an airborne illness. So health and safety would be first, addressing deferred maintenance and building projects that have been put off time and time again would be second. But collab, but dovetailing with that is obviously the ensuring the core learning and technology of not just brick and mortar, but technological initiatives as well. You don't need as much brick and mortar as Noel was saying, if you've got these technological developments. So that's my answer.
Thank you. Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you. Obviously, what everybody has said, right? The collaboration, the input from the community, working with the Board of Finance and figuring out the, the proper budget, even projected over the next five years. But ultimately, children cannot learn if they are not in the appropriate environment. So if the buildings are subpar for some reason, whether there's a leak or systems are down or their portable classrooms or whatever the, the situation should be, is, that needs to be addressed so the children have the best position to learn, which is ultimately what the Board of Education is about. It is about increasing all of the children's ability to reach their full potential and that includes the buildings. So that's why those are somewhat of a pri, they are a priority in addition to everything else. But again, it's a budget to be done over five years that everybody's got to work together on to, to have everybody comfortable.
Thank you. We're on to our next question. What programming suggestions would you suggest to assist any students who have fallen behind in skill development due to remote learning and/or COVID-19 protocols? And Mr. Cusano, you're first.
Anybody who's fallen behind, you know, in relation to your question, remote learning from the past, there is no more remote learning currently. At least my, everyone is back in the classroom. So those that have fallen behind over the past year, year and a half, however long this pandemic has been going, it seems to keep going and never ending. I know through my experience, I know that there are programs where there are class-based tutors for math, where I know my students, I study all time, can seek out extra help during regular class time. I'm also a big proponent, having been a, a sports coach for many years for children. I'm very big on peer learning. There could be, for instance, seniors or juniors who could help bring freshmen or sophomores up to speed on some of the bit, on some of the classes. It could be used possibly as their community service. It could also enhance their academic standing as they're taking AP classes in math or in English. They could help other students with capital.
Ms. Faulkner.
Yes, I believe that there are currently some enrichment opportunities being offered. Over the past summer, I know there was an offer for students whose parents felt that they needed some time to catch up. My son participates in ESY, but my understanding this, this is a completely different program offering. I tried to tell my kids that I thought it would be a great opportunity, but couldn't sell them on the idea of going in the summer. So I think continuing to offer enrichment opportunities such as those, continuing to find time within the school day, if they can get creative. I know at Adams, they have this win period now, what I need. And I think, you know, I worry just as much about the social loss as I do the academic loss. So for me, the priority has to be just as much finding ways to get these kids reconnecting as it is about catching up with lost academic time.
Thank you. Mr. Mizano.
Okay, all the children, it's so sad, all of them have lost some time and fallen behind, even my own children. And I did spend a lot of time with them. Distance learning is difficult and we really do need to make up for that time. I think next idea of the peer assistance is fantastic, doesn't cost anything. I know that students have to devote hours to community service. I think that's terrific. Also, I think the paras are so important in the classroom and compensating them and doing what we can seems critical to me to bring the, the children back up to speed. Also, if we eliminate some of this minutia in the classroom, things that are unnecessary, I think that parents can handle as far as teaching and concentrate and focus on the thing that the teachers, who I adore by the way, do so well, I think that will speed up the process as well.
Ms. Passarelli.
Sorry. Okay, so programs to assist students for skill development, we're, we're facing that a lot, even in my district, as young as kindergarten. So I think some of the pieces that could be implemented are the Fuentes and Pennell, LLI, the Level Literacy Intervention piece. There's Reflex Math that can help with automaticity, automaticity in math facts. There is peer mentoring, peer modeling, enrichment opportunities, like Chrissy said. There's STEM before and after school, especially because I know a lot of parents, we have, you know, time that we need to see before kids, but those could be based on academics. There's reading a math specialist that we have in buildings. Those coaches be going in for interventions. There's SRBI supports. There's the Summer Learning Academy as well. Also reaching out to the community, there is the A plus math that used to be right near Villa Nails. We could try and get them to help come in and to support the classrooms. The Lexile scores is an adaptive program where we can check our kid's students and that can be done.
Thank you. Mr. Petra.
Well, it's, I mean, there are a lot of students that had a hard time during COVID. I mean, it was tough. It was very tough, especially for the younger kids. But I, I won't, I won't pretend to be an expert. I, I won't try to fake my way through it. I would certainly just rely on the expertise of the administration and the staff and work with them to develop whatever plans are needed. Even if we needed to supplement with additional budget, we have to make up for what was lost in the last year and take care of our kids. We have to make sure that they're well educated and prepared. Again, I rely on actual expertise and competence rather than trying to make it up as I go.
Thank you. Ms. Raider.
Thank you. This is a huge priority for me as both a parent and as a board member. The biggest impact I think we've seen out of this pandemic has been the impact of the social emotional development of our students. Many of them are behind socially and emotionally, meaning that they haven't met those milestones that you would expect them to meet, say in the fifth grade or the seventh grade or the ninth grade. They're behind in that interaction with their peers. So I would really like to encourage, as we have more social opportunities, more emotional supports. We budgeted just this past year for additional psychologists and school counselors and social workers to make sure that the schools were outfitted with the support that they needed. And also to remember that our teachers have been impacted and to continue professional development around the trauma experience stakes they've had to deal with and also to support them through their own developments that they can be there for our children. It's a holistic approach and also understanding that curriculum wise, we do have to accelerate these kids along and to meet each of them where they're at.
Thank you. Ms. Scarpalino.
Hi there. So again, the first thing I would do is, is communicate with the families and find out exactly what it is they need, what they feel their children have lost, whether it's social and emotional or whether it's academic. There's no doubt that these kids suffered. I, I would definitely want to make sure that we were conferring with experts and people who could make suggestions on what could happen. I would also want to make sure that we weren't wasting and maybe, you know, putting money towards things that were unnecessary when it could be actually going to, towards tutors or programs that could help these children. I also would hope that we would be transparent and not try to hide these losses, not try to lower the bar so that it would appear as if our children were not losing. I would hate to have something that's going on at the high school now. It's called a mastery diploma. There, it, it, to me, it's one credit. It's over two years. It's, it's, it's not graded. It's a pass fail to me.
Thank you.
What is that?
Mr. Skreta.
So my answer, I'm basically going to adopt by proxy everything Moira said. So if I'm allowed to do that. Moira's demonstrating the benefits of being an incumbent because she actually knows what she's talking about. Obviously, the school system is working hard on reconnecting and, and resocializing the students. Obviously, that is the number one thing. Moira hit on the fact that teachers too are affected by this. So whatever we can do to work with the administration and the teachers who are the experts in this and, and that's why we trust them and give them their, the additional resources they need, whether that's additional tutoring. And even as Mr. Mizano said, the encouraging the paras, who are so important and such an integral part of the classroom.
Thank you. Ms. Baldwin.
So I've been lucky in that both of my children who have struggled throughout this entire COVID and, and remote learning, and they did horribly, are not alone. It seems to me as if most, if not all of the children in some way had a loss, whether it was academic, whether it was social or emotional, mental health, in some way, everybody had a loss in the last 18 months. The heartening thing is that both of my children have benefited greatly since the beginning of the school year with all those resources that are out there, the social workers, the counselors. Both of them have, have lost through the middle school, learning how to organize themselves and go from classroom to classroom and just navigate all of the difficulties that come with middle school. They both lost all of that and they're having a hard time this year. But the school system had, has implemented, the Board of Education, the administration has implemented these wonderful supports. My kids are availing themselves of that, so are their friends and it really should be applauded and I would like to see that continue.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain.
In some ways, it's not a few kids that fell behind. It's an entire generation that fell behind. And that's what needs to be addressed. Our teachers are the ones best equipped to do that. They're used to being able to meet kids where they are. They're used to adjusting their curriculum to meet kids at the level that they come into the classroom. And that's what's going to need to happen. The entire class, yes, has lost time. And in order, you're never going to make up for that. You can mitigate it as best you can. One way to regain some of that lost time though, is to eliminate things like the advisory period that is just sitting around discussing largely politically active topics that don't matter in the realm of academics. They don't help your math scores. They don't help your English scores. They don't help you learn about science or society. They're just feel-good parts.
Thank you. And our next question. Earlier this year, families were asked to give input about how to spend COVID relief funding. Many responses suggested increasing outdoor time and physical activity. Do you agree and how can this be implemented? And Ms. Faulkner, you're first.
I do agree. I think, as I said, you know, one of my greatest concerns is the social and emotional loss that our children have suffered throughout this last 18 months. You know, I, I understand that there are still COVID mitigation strategies in place, even at Adams, that limit their ability to interact and chat freely. So I just think the more time they can spend outdoors in a safe environment, being kids and playing, the better. I understand there's a balance there because we've also suffered academic losses. But for me personally, I do prioritize the social emotional. You know, I have a child who's autistic and he's suffered incredible setbacks, but I see it in my two typical children as well. And as someone once said, you know, you can be as bright and successful in the world as, you know, all get out. But if you can't interact with other peers appropriately, like how far can you really go? So I think the more time we can get these kids together, just being kids again, the better for their overall mental health. So I think the more time we can get these kids together, just being kids again, the better for their overall mental health.
Thank you. Mr. Mazzano?
Yes, what a great question, actually. It's so important that the kids get that time outside and are able to reconnect with their peers. There's so many things that could be done in that area. And it's been lost. A lot has been lost. If kids aren't happy, then the whole school experience kind of goes on the wayside. And I hate to see that. A lot of beauty's been lost in the school, whether it be through poetry and art and music. All these things have been infused with, through the lens of race and it's like the poets. I've read some of the poetry and it's really a downer. It's got a lot of poor language and violence and this is not what the kids need. Let the kids be kids. Go out, have fun with each other. Don't expect them to save the world. Let them love life, enjoy school, and that will absolutely enhance their learning experience and their relationship with their parents.
Ms. Passarelli?
Hi, I agree. Being outdoors allows them to interact in a more free base piece. I know especially with regard to early childhood, one of the biggest pushes is learning through play. So if we can improve that, especially with the early childhood piece, right? That's the birth to three, birth to third grade. I think that will help everybody's social emotional well-being. When it comes to the high school, getting outside, they do, I know, one of the biggest complaints that I've heard from parents is that they have this double study hall and they weren't able to get the appropriate classes in order to meet the extracurricular requirements. But let's, let's maybe look at some opportunities to get some extra vocational supports in there. We could get them outside, maybe in an automotive class and working outside and learning a skill. Right? That's, that's an okay thing to do. But I definitely think using that ability to get outdoors. I know Lakes has a great school where you can just go outdoors in every class.
Mr. Petra?
I agree that kids definitely need outdoor time. We have to teach the entire child. We have to teach academics, athletics, social well-being, social interactions, all of it. Being outdoors certainly is a benefit to most kids, especially younger ones. So yeah, I would support that as long as, like Christie said, it's in balance with their academics. Again, I'd leave that up to the teachers and the experts. They deal with it every day and they know best how to balance it.
Thank you. Ms. Rader?
Thank you. Yeah, the funding we received through the ESSR grants and the other grants this year and the past year and a half has been really helpful and beneficial to a lot of these inclusive of those that get our kids outside or give them that break from their academic rigors. And regards to outdoor time, absolutely would love to be able to fit more time into the school day. But unless we expand our school day, we're going to be pressed to find more opportunities for that, but absolutely harnessing the time we have through extracurriculars, clubs, and other opportunities like that. The grants do stipulate certain areas that need to be addressed with the funding. But I'm absolutely hopeful that we can continue. We just applied for our third ESSR grant. So hopefully we will see some of that benefit, those outdoor activities. But overall, I would absolutely want to make sure that the social emotional well-being of our kids is always kept as that priority. Thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Scarpolino?
If the community was polled and the community asked for more outdoor time with the, the grants, then that's exactly where the money should go. I'm curious to know where the money did go. I, I know for a fact that some of the money went to an equity officer. Some of the money went to a diversity residency program. How is this going to help our children, especially during a pandemic when outdoor time is beneficial? It's, it's, it's healthier to be outdoors. So all this talk of where the money goes, and especially if a poll was taken, then they are the boss. Communities, just to set the record straight, because it seems to be very confused, especially this year. The community runs the schools, the communities, the community, the parents, the families, they're the boss. The Board of Education then takes into consideration what the community needs and what the community wants. The Board of Education then oversees the superintendent. I think we've lost sight of that. I think those priorities are upside down. And if I'm elected to the Board of Education, that they're reestablished to their proper rightful.
Mr. Skreta, you're next.
So outdoor time and increased physical activity. Obviously, I think it's a great idea. I, I don't think that outdoor time is mutually, mutually exclusive from in-class learning. I think they're actually mutually beneficial. When, when, and particularly for the younger kids, if they're able to get outdoors, stretch their legs, clear their head, enjoy nature even, they're able to come back into the classroom and be a lot more focused and be much more productive when they're back into the classroom learning environment. But they're also learning while they're outdoors. And it's a big part of the socialization piece that we've been missing. Also, back in the 1918 pandemic, they, they brought a lot of classes outdoors, I was reading somewhere. I think that this is also, could also be a health initiative during a global pandemic. So I think it's, it's a good thing.
Thank you. Ms. Baldwin?
Just to piggyback on Mr. Skreta's last comment, I do know there's a lot of teachers in our district who have in fact done that. They have taken advantage of the tents that were installed at the schools and did take their classes outside. But in addition to that, not just outdoor time, but physical activity. It's real easy to incorporate physical activity in the classroom. Movement breaks, there's ways to, you know, ask a question to the students and say, whoever thinks this, you know, yes or no to this question, go to this side of the room and go to that side of the room. We get them moving while they're talking. Another thing that could be used for physical activity, which is so important, again, with my son, is this, like a sensory hallway, which were very popular right before the pandemic. Where the intention was, as the children move through the school or through the classroom, it's a very focused way for them to move to help them get their bodies and get that energy out while learning or while socializing and getting all the, the rest of the things that they need into that day.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain?
I think there's a huge difference between being outside and being in a tent that just acts like a room. I agree with everybody else that outdoor time is very important. Mr. Skreta and I were on a soccer team together in high school. My kids came home today and saw I'm inside. I said, get outside. It is beautiful out. There's no reason to be inside. I don't see how funding necessarily will help people spend more time outside. But things like lights on the field, which, or on the second field at the high school can be helpful for that. I believe that's one of the requests that was at the Board of Ed to fund some more lights on more fields so that you have a greater ability to spend time outside. And I agree with what Danielle was saying, that if that's what the members of the community want, that's what we should be doing rather than spending the money on diversity liaison or on things that are political in nature.
Thank you. Mr. Cusano?
Thank you. Much like everybody else, I the additional funds is definitely an opportunity, definitely something that, you know, that you don't budget for, but something that is beneficial that happens over the course of the year. And as a result of COVID, in agreement with everybody, the social element to the children has definitely been impacted as well as the academics. And I think the proper use of those funds is really to strike the appropriate balance between those. You know, the additional funds coming in, that was a terrific opportunity to maybe fund some additional programs from your previous question, to catch those kids up academically. If some of those initiatives require funding, I really would have liked to see some of the money be allocated for those kind of programs. Completely understand the need to get outside, physical activity, the social element that's been so slowed down over the past year and a half needs to be addressed as well. My only thing is I think there should be, you know, the right balance of things to address all the needs of the children rather than just, this discussion seems to have focused primarily on just the social element of it. That's all.
Thank you. We're now heading to into our next question. What needs to be done to ensure that Guilford students are well-prepared for the future? Mr. Mazzano, you're first.
Again, I think that's a great question. I think the most important thing is for, and we have this in Guilford, and that's why I love living here so much. Been here 59 years, believe it or not. And parents are the best teachers. Parents really do prepare their children for the outside world. They love them more than anybody else. They understand them better than anybody else. If a teacher is teaching my child how to do math, how to do science, to love reading and writing and literature and all those important things and history, the good and the bad. I'm happy. And the other stuff that's going to come from me, that's going to come from my, my wife. And with that collaboration between the parents and the school, there is nothing that these kids in Guilford can accomplish. And we need to believe in them. These kids are good kids and they're going to be successful. And we have to trust in that. Thank you.
Ms. Passarelli?
Oh my God, I've been on mute. Hi. So I think when it comes to ensuring that our students are going to be well-prepared for the future, we need to focus on STEM, right? Science, technology, engineering, math. We need to make sure that they're strong in those skills because this is the new era. They need to have technology know-how. I suggested just as today, in a different school, that we create maybe a class that's built just for technology so students can work with coding. They can work on learning how to build computers, how to fix computers. That's, that's where we're going to. Vocational skills. College is not right for everybody. Everybody should have the opportunity to go to school, to college, to further their education, but sometimes it's just not the right pace. Look at all these wonderful positions, electricians, plumbers, they're, they're all vocational skills. Like I said before, an auto mechanic skills. I think the importance is that we need to have them college and career ready. Right? That's what we need to do. So we need to do whatever we add.
Thank you. Mr. Petra?
Yeah, we need to prepare our children and, you know, so far, we've done an excellent job. Our, our schools are fabulous and academically, we prepare them for everything that they're going to experience in the world, whether it's STEM, arts, athletics, they are well-prepared. The one thing that I've heard, and I just heard this week from graduates from Guilford High School, these are kids who graduated about 10 years ago and they're out in the world right now. And every single one of them said that we prepared them academically for everything that they're experiencing. They're all succeeding academically. The one thing that we did not do enough is to prepare them for the, the reality that whatever world they go into, whether it's to college or into vocation, the world is diverse. The world has all different kinds of backgrounds and all different kinds of people. And we need to prepare them to manage that, to deal with that, to embrace that and to compete in a world that is full of the simplest words of diversity.
Ms. Rader?
Thank you. Just to dovetail off of what Mr. Petra said, the most important thing we need to do to prepare our kids for the future is yes, to provide them an academically rigorous, well-rounded education that speaks to the ability of every child. And in that, you must address the diversity, equity, and inclusion piece. And equity and inclusion doesn't just mean skin color. It means it can be a child's disability. It can be their sexual identity, their gender identity, their ethnic identity. However, they identify, we need to support them and give them the language and the ability to feel comfortable in that, in any setting that they leave Guilford in. Guilford is a little bit of a bubble in terms of homogenous demographics. But if we, we would do our students a disservice if we didn't continually work to help them better prepare themselves to go out into the world and understand and to be global citizens.
Thank you. Ms. Scarpolino?
Scarpolino, that's okay. Okay, the first thing I would do to ensure.
Sorry, did I miss something? Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
The first thing I would do to ensure Guilford students are prepared for their adulthood is I would preserve our current curriculum. It's an award-winning school. I wouldn't change a thing, unlike our opponents want to do. They want to change the curriculum from an academic-based curriculum to a social justice-based curriculum. Don't let them tell you anything differently. It would be a drastic change. If I'm elected to the Board of Education, that will not happen. I would also make sure that we focus on STEM. It is, we are behind. China's kicking our butt in those areas. There's no excuse for it. We're the greatest country in the world. Our education system is, is not up to par. I believe we need to focus more on these skills so our children can compete globally. I also think the part about preparing them emotionally and preparing them, that's the parent's job. A lot of these students that spoke recently, they're PhDs from Ivy League schools. I, I would think I would be proud if my child was able to go out into the world and achieve a PhD from an Ivy League school. I believe all the other components are the parent's job, not the school's job.
Mr. Skreta?
So obviously, having a rigorous academic curriculum is how you prepare students for the world. Right now, obviously, the hot button issue is the equity and social justice curriculum, which, as I said earlier, is supplemental. We are not getting rid of any current curriculum by implementing the Equity and Social Justice Program. We're actually preserving the current curriculum and then having the value added of the Equity and Social Justice Program, which allows students to obtain additional perspectives on the same issues that they've been learning about. And that is how they're going to go out into the world beyond just Guilford and interact with an increasingly diverse and less homogenous world and be valuable contributors and citizens within it.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin?
Thank you. Preparing children for the future, once they leave this lovely town, it is a big wide world that looks a lot different than we do. It has a very diverse community out there and we are doing a great disservice if we do not teach our children that there are people out in the world that do not look like they do. The diversity and equity and inclusion that is being discussed about adding to the curriculum here is, is super important. Equity and inclusion are not nasty words. They are the cornerstone of the law surrounding every marginalized member of the society. It is the cornerstone of civil rights. It is the cornerstone of women's rights. It is the cornerstone of the ADA and special ed. So it is not a nasty term. It is the thing that gets my child into the same arena and gets him the services and helps build up his achievement level so that when he graduates, he will have a very successful life. And all of this is just meant to help build our students so they are global thinkers and critical thinkers.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain?
I send my kids to school to learn academics. I send them to school for STEM, for technology, for languages, English, Spanish, coding, liberal arts, history taught in context. I do not send them to school to learn ethics. Ethics, I teach them at home. I go to church to learn ethics. Ethics have no place in a school system. We disagree too much on ethics to be teaching them to our students. Whose ethics are you teaching? Yours, mine, or somebody else's? If we don't agree on it, why are we trying to push it down our kids' throats unless all parents agree on the same things, which clearly we do not? The push for equity and inclusion is splitting kids on the basis of their race and their economic privilege. And I disagree wholeheartedly with that.
Thank you. Mr. Cusano?
There it is. Thank you. Um, be real clear. There is definitely a place within school for diversity and cultural acceptance. I think what we're seeing here is just, just a disagreement in the way it should be presented or the program in which, how it's implemented within the school system. So I just wanted to make that pretty clear. And our kids don't live in a bubble. They go outside to Guilford, Connecticut. Guilford is not a bubble unto itself. Parents, we take our kids all over the place. We are gifted with the ability to go anywhere. My kids experience a great many things. But as far as preparedness for the world, myself being an IT professional, very heavy on technology. Well, I think we need to address basic life skills, which are no longer a part of any part of their educational experience. You know, I want to send my kids out, not only do they need to survive academically and socially, but they need basic life skills. You know, we joke, how to boil water? Do they know about Bitcoin, which is coming? Do they know how to sew a button on their shirt? You know, basically. You know, basic life skills. I think we need to find a place somewhere in the curriculum, somewhere to prepare these kids for other than academic success.
Ms. Faulkner?
Lot to say when you go at the end, I've just realized. I just quickly wanted to touch upon the ethics piece. I respect but disagree. I think that schools, you know, you hear this said from teachers at an early age, you know, they spend a vast majority of their days with our children at a certain point. And, you know, there are incredible programs we see at the elementary level that address ethics and behavior and morals. And I'm just not quite sure how you can avoid when you spend that much time with the young population who's learning and growing. I I don't understand how a teacher could not play a role in positively impacting and teaching and shaping those minds. I also wanted to touch upon the comparison of China and STEM. I've heard that said before, and I did a little digging. I'm not sure if people are aware, but it's a very different system there. And if and if we want to move to that direction, then we need to know that high school will no longer be free. And our children will be in school most likely six days a week. And we need to say goodbye to extracurriculars and sports activities because it's a very different balance there. And I don't think you can just draw that comparison and lump us together like that.
Thank you. We've now reached the point where we're going to be go to our closing statements. Each of the candidates will get one minute for their closing statement. And we will begin alphabetically. So Ms. Baldwin, would you please start?
Thank you very much. And thank you for everyone for for joining this forum. It has been very informative. I just want to reiterate that I am very excited to be able to run for a Board of Education position here in the town of Guilford. I've lived here for eighteen years. Both of my children are in the school system and have been and will continue to be. I am a huge advocate for education and especially public education. Come from a long family of teachers, a long line of teachers in my family, and really have great respect for everything that they do. I do like to work collaboratively. I have the type of job where I don't have any friends. I don't, no one walks away happy. Everyone, I have to really mediate some real emotional situations. So I think I'm well equipped to handle that as a Board of Education member. And I'm always willing to work for compromises where they're needed and be able to put my personal opinions aside for the better of the school system.
Thank you. Mr. Chamberlain? I'm sorry, Mr. Chamberlain, we can't hear you.
I hope that people listen to Dr. Freeman at the UConn Panel of Alumni on Critical Race Theory, as he promises to hire based on the acceptance of radical liberal ideology. Read the Facebook post where our new inclusion officer, Rydell Harrison, calls everyone not on the far left, co-conspirators with domestic terrorism. Read the letter from the Board of Ed that accuses all of complicity in a systematic and institutional racism and promises to use skin color as determining factor in hiring. Read the statement from the high school music department and the voice, Black Voices Matter pledge that inspired it. Look at the books that Dr. Freeman recommends, White Fragility, Growing Up White, and of course, Kendi's How to Be an Anti-Racist, which every consultant hired by the board references, and read for yourselves how the capitalist system is necessarily racist. Verify for yourself and what the radical board has said. And then vote for Robby.
Thank you. Mr. Cusano?
First of all, thank you very much for providing this forum this evening. I think it's really important that everybody gets the opportunity to talk and express their opinion. So thank you very much. I'm a parent. Never thought in a million years I'd be running for the Board of Education. I relish the challenge and the opportunity that lies ahead of me. I am a professional. I am a collaborator. I am a consensus builder. I am a motivator. I am the person people turn to define solutions. I look to gain consensus in everything I do in my professional life every day. I think what we have here at its core is just the difference of opinion in the way things are being implemented within the high school, within all, within Guilford Public Schools, excuse me. But at its core, I think every, I think everybody has the children in their best interest. I'm asking for your vote. I'm asking for you to vote Robby on November second. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Faulkner?
There is so much hanging in the balance with the outcome of this Board of Ed election. We could see our schools continue on a path toward success and exit academic excellence. Or we can watch them be torn apart by a very vocal minority who insists that they know better than our expert educators and administrators. The blatantly false accusations have to end. There's work to be done. There's always room for improvement. But it's important that we come to the table ready to discuss and hear each other, and we come informed with facts and not propaganda. There's no way to find compromise with extreme viewpoints. I believe in working together to achieve Guilford's hope of providing a quality education to our students that prepares them for a life in a diverse and ever-changing world.
Thank you. Mr. Mazzano?
Yes, Christie's absolutely right. You can't negotiate with people who are extremists. Row C, make no doubt about it, they are Democrat, left-wing extremists. And if they are voted in, what you will have is a monolith at the Board of Education. They will rubber stamp every single thing that Dr. Freeman comes out with. There'll be no opinions, no opinions that disagree with him ever. And our education system will suffer for it. We're all better when we have differing opinions. We can agree. But this would be a complete disaster. One third of the town would be excluded from the education system. If these three row C radical Democrats get on, they are not independent, make no mistake. That's the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Passarelli? I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Okay, I said, I just want to say thank you for everybody for taking the time. Thank you for moderating this. I think there's a lot that's been discussed when we talk about talking to the parents and seeing what they want as support. Additional thoughts that came to mind were additional time for PE classes instead of maybe one or two days a week, making it a four or five days. Get rid of those double study halls. We have parents complaining about the double study halls. Add an additional PE teacher. We could have brain breaks. Like Jennifer said, there are opportunities to have brain breaks and Go Noodle was one of the best programs. I think it's important that we should acknowledge what Christie had said, that, you know, we're not comparable to Chinese. But we also do have the shortest day in the state, and that's something that should be looked at. Right? We should look at maybe increasing the length of day. Educating the whole child, paying attention to the social emotional well-being of our children, making sure that we're not incorporating these ridiculous walks where they decide who's on what side and racial affinity groups. I was just in one in an educational leadership group.
Thank you. Mr. Petra? You're next?
Thank you. I am a businessman, a capitalist, and an independent. We're an independent because I vote the issues and because I vote based on the person who's running. I've always been that way. Mostly, I'm a proud dad who's put two kids through this excellent school system. I watched my children go to school from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade, both of them. And I was amazed by the excellence that our teachers, excellent teaching that our teachers provided, the love and the care that they gave them, even through the pandemic. And the skill and professionalism that our administration has used to mold our school into one of the top in the country. That's the country. I went to a private school. We paid a lot of money for me to go to a private school, and I can tell you without question, my children in a public school got a much a better education than I did. Our schools are excellent, and I don't want people coming in out of nowhere for the first time in their lives and trying to get involved to screw things up.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Rader.
Thank you. Well, I want to stay on a positive note tonight. Much like everyone here, I'm a parent to four students, three who are still in the school district, and my son is now a freshman in college. It's actually my daughter's seventeenth birthday tonight. And we had an early dinner because I sat with her and said, look, I've got this forum I should do. And she said, Mom, I want you to do it. I know how important all of these issues are, and I'm proud of the work you've done. And I want to see you and your group succeed in getting on the board. It's important to her. She's a student in our school. She knows firsthand how valuable her education is. But I just want to conclude on something that I actually wrote to the editor in the Courier this week. And it's something my dad used to say to me. He's been gone for twenty six years, but he always put a high value on education. And he would say, Moira, education is the one thing among many that once it's yours, no one can take away from you. So I just hope we can all remember that the priority here is our kids and their education and putting aside our grievances and remembering that that's why we are asked to serve on the Board of Education.
Thank you. Ms. Scarpolino?
Since one of the ultra-extremist liberals on row C brought up screwing things up, I'd like to make a point. Election laws are in place to ensure the integrity and accountability of all uses of absentee ballots. Our opponents on row A and C violated these laws. Guilford has had a history of honest and legitimate elections until now. Bravo to the hard workers on our team and our election officials who know the state election laws. How did a campaign with three attorneys fail to interpret these clear guidelines? Every voter must demand nothing less than a hundred percent nonpartisan fairness and integrity. And if there is a prime example of this principle being violated, this is it. How do we trust these people with our children? How do we trust these people to run our schools when they can't even get an election correct? So talk about screwing things up, Mr. Petra. I think you nailed that one. Thanks, everyone. Vote Robby.
Mr. Skreta?
So Ms. Scarpolino's patently incorrect, but that's besides the point. Thank you, Carol, and thank you to the League of Women Voters East Shore for putting together this candidate forum. We appreciate the chance to discuss our qualifications. I am a husband and a proud parent. I am running for the Board of Ed because I want to both protect and promote Guilford Public Schools and its students. The contrast between me and my opponents is clear, and this election has become a watershed moment for Guilford. We serve various constituencies on the board, and the students are by far the most important. We also support the teachers and administrators whose expertise we trust in the development of the curriculum for our students. A robust, modern curriculum necessarily includes an equity, diversity and social and and inclusion program. Such a program is supplemental and only further enhances the strong classroom choices already available. These programs are ubiquitous throughout corporate America, government and international institutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much to all the candidates for participating in this lively and informative debate. We are grateful for their taking the time to be a part of it. We are also grateful to BCTV for recording this debate. This recording will be available on the League of Women Voters of the East Shore YouTube channel and GuilfordTV.org. Your local government impacts your life every day. It will be the voters' turn to speak. Be sure you vote on Tuesday, November second, when the polls will be open from six AM to eight PM. Thank you. Have a good evening.